...funding for the Airport Improvement Program and the Essential Air Services. So I am going to pass this announcement that I printed off to my colleague.
I already got it.
Oh, you already got it?
Yeah, we all get them.
Okay. Which I thought was, that was a great boon for us because setting on the Public Lands Steering Committee for NACO, it was one of our priorities. I attended the meeting of the administration's Natural Resources Committee members and hosted by, I will be attending the administration's Natural Resources Committee members' meeting hosted by Elko County in Elko on March 12th. I've been asked to speak on the challenges that Nye County has faced with the U.S. Forest Services Travel Management Plan. I will discuss our successes and with our minor county road project and our failures. All of the counties from, the counties that are involved are from California, Arizona, Montana, Idaho, Utah, and Nevada. And we're all going to be requesting the same action, which is to do those travel management plans over with full consideration given to the counties. I also attended the NDOT meeting that I mentioned at the last commissioners' meeting. It was going to be the day that followed that. That meeting was on the sage grouse habitat. Item 27A today will, will deal with this by asking the commission to approve some comments that are going to be sent out if they receive approval. It was a good meeting in that so many agencies were represented and working together. And it was bad in the fact that so many agencies were represented and working together. There are major, the major threats that they are listing, that they are referring to are the pinion juniper expansion, wildfires, predation, and habitat fragmentation. If, and I believe when, the sage grouse becomes listed, it would criminalize non-permitted private land activities. So we need to all be paying attention to what's going on with that. I have two websites where you can pick up information on this entire movement to protect the habitat for sage grouse. And it also tells you what the current activities are. That's sagequery@BLM.gov. And the other one is www.sagestep.org. And I'll provide those to anybody who wants to write them down later, call me for it. The Public Lands and Natural Resources Committee made a recommendation to NACO to intervene or to enter into an agreement letter with Mark Pollitt, who is the attorney that was selected by the Public Lands and Natural Resources Committee. They did sign that, they approved it. And his first task is going to be to complete the due diligence. And that would be to exhaust all remedies administratively. And this is all concerning the Wild Horse and Burrow Act. It also came to my attention that, I don't have the details on it yet, and I've been waiting for those to come through on email. But I was told that there has been a bill presented to Congress that would increase the numbers of the wild horse and burrows that are allowed on the range from the 1971 figures of 26,500 and increase it to the numbers that they claim are on the range right now, which is closer to 39,500. Public Lands, Natural Resources, and National Public Lands Steering Committee will both be pushing back against that legislation.
Good.
And that is all I have right at the moment.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Under Commissioner Manager's comments, I'll recap the legislative committee on public lands that I attended last week or the week before.
Please do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, general public comment. This is a three-minute time limit per person. No action will be taken on the matters until they are specifically included on an agenda. Is there any public comment in Purump?
Yes, Madam Chair. Diane Lake, I have a general public comment. She's coming forward now.
Okay. I also have a staff member at the Tonopah office that, if she could come to the table as well?
She is doing that.
Okay.
Ooh, I'm echoing. I can hear myself through your, strange. Never happened before. Go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
There you go.
My name is Keri McCarty. Can you spell that? I'm a case manager for Nye Communities Coalition and Career Connections. We've opened an office here in Tonopah and...
Where are you? Where's that office located?
It's in the Health and Human Services Building at Hot Radar Road.
Okay.
Yep. I've only been here, this is my fourth week, and we're working diligently trying to get this program up and going here. Hopefully, we can hire someone locally eventually. But right now, I'm traveling from Caliente to here every week. And so, and I've brought some schedules for you, but I just want to let you know that we're here. And I'll be forwarding some more information on to all of you by email.
Wonderful.
I want to get that together, okay?
Good.
Thank you very much.
This is Diane. I just wanted to elaborate a little bit on that. I am the center manager for the Career Connection Office here in Purump. And we did just open it about four weeks ago in Tonopah. We are going to be out there often, well, we're going to be out there every week, but it will be three days one week, two days another, until we do get a full-time person. We have forwarded that job opening form to James Eason, the town manager, to see if he can help us out filling that position so that we don't have to have Keri traveling back and forth. But we did want to let the Board of Commissioners know that we are now in Tonopah and we will be in Tonopah continuously.
Diane, who provides your funding?
Our funding is currently through Workforce Connections out of Las Vegas, which is the Workforce Investment Board for the state of Southern, or for the state of Nevada, but the southern Nevada.
Commissioner Boraski, you're our representative on that.
Yes.
Well, thank you for this. Thank you. Good job.
Well, I've been bending some ears lately to...
Good job.
Try to get this to happen.
Wonderful.
We do apologize that it took us so long to get it. Actually, one of the things that stopped us is we actually took over the Caliente office for Lincoln County in May, which is when we were intending on opening the Tonopah office. But of course, because we had that other office come to us, we couldn't do that at that time. So now we are there, and like I said, we're going to stay there as long as the funding continues, which we don't see an issue with that right now. So we just wanted to let you guys know that we are out there.
Keri, anybody who says that Highway 50 is the loneliest road in America, never made the drive from Tonopah to Caliente.
Very true. Very true.
You don't get a radio signal. You don't get a cellphone signal. You don't get anything out there.
No.
You don't pass, you don't pass any other cars. You get what?
Possibly. Possibly.
Yeah, UFOs, that's right. UFOs.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course, she always has a few cows to pass to.
Oh, yeah.
Watch for those. Yeah. Be careful.
They're stealth cows.
They are. Is there anyone else down there in Purump that wishes to speak on general public comment? Anyone here in Tonopah?
Yes, there's, there's one.
Oh, you do have one?
Yes.
Okay.
Another came for it.
Okay.
State your name, please, and spell it.
John Zellifer. Just representing myself, and I would like to invite the commissioners to take a position, a formal position, on the Bright Source project out at Hidden Hills, just south of Purump. I am an intervenor with the California Energy Commission, and I have not yet seen any formal correspondence to the California Energy Commission from the Nye County Commissioners. This project is getting quite a bit of scrutiny, both for and against. And I think whichever position the commissioners would like to adopt on this, it would be very helpful to get that to the California Energy Commission as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll get with Earl Lacy on that and see if we, what, if we want to do a resolution or something.
That would be great.
The board would support that.
Thank you.
I have testified, I think Commissioner Shinoffen has as well, at the Energy Commission. So they are aware that some of the Nye County Commissioners are involved, and maybe a resolution would be the way to support them as a sister county.
Resolution or a letter of support or whatever they can use?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you for taking that on.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Could I, I'd like to make a public comment if I could.
Please.
I just wanted to let everyone know that we've been operating a child advocacy center, which does, it really brings together the sheriff's office, the district attorney's office, DCFS, and the abuse counselors in these scenarios.
Noto abuse.
Noto abuse. And what they do is, we have a facility in which we interview the children that are suspected of sexual abuse or even just, you know, regular abuse. And it gives us a setting where we can have these kids interviewed one time. They're not getting doubled whammy by all the different organizations. So it's been a great program. And I think having a county of our size to be able to have this is really phenomenal. And I just wanted to let everyone know that just recently, we received a $10,000 grant from...
A donation.
From Round Mountain Gold, which will allow us to get the video equipment and things to set up a facility here in Tonopah and to get a trained forensic interviewer here for Tonopah to service the northern Nye area. So we will have two different facilities, both in Tonopah and Purump. And so we, I mean, obviously, we couldn't do this without the generous donation, you know, from Round Mountain Gold. And I just wanted to let everyone know that that's really coming on board here very soon.
I think Noto Abuse has already identified and hired their counselor.
Yeah. And I think they're trying to get him sent to, sent to training so we can get it up and running here. So that's a really nice development for us.
That's great.
They won't, kids won't have to be shipped all over the county. And I think it's a stinking shame that you even need to have a service like that.
It is an unfortunate reality, but it's nice, nice to be able to do this so we don't have to, you know, go to great expense to have them shipped to Vegas or Reno or...
Which is what they were doing.
Yeah.
Now, I recognize you as having the floor, Brian, and we lost our other general public comment. Did you make her mad?
No.
I just asked her to please talk to Pam before she...
Oh, okay. So you were aware.
Yeah, I knew what was...
Okay. We're going to move on to our 1015 timed item, and this is to recess to the Nye County Board of Road Commissioners.
Did we go past Commissioner Manager's comments or was that just?
Not yet.
Oh, that was just general public comment.
That was general public comment. Commissioner Shinoffen, Chairman Shinoffen.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to open this meeting of the Nye County Board of Road Commissioners, go to the 1015 item for possible actions. It's a public hearing, discussion deliberation to adopt, amend, and adopt or reject the Nye County Road Commission's resolutions that are listed below. I think we will open the public hearing first. Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody wishing to speak on this item? For or against? I see nobody moving in Purump. Anybody in Tonopah?
Uh-uh.
Beatty points north. Nowhere? Okay. All right. Well, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adopt.
Second. I have a motion to adopt from Commissioner Eastley, seconded by Commissioner Boraski. Further discussion? Hearing none. Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Passes 5-0. Good, item one for possible action, approval of minutes for the Nye County Board of Road Commissioners, January 3rd, meeting 2012. Any corrections? Let's start here with Gary.
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Gary, any corrections?
No.
Joni? Commissioner Eastley?
One, but I think Lorinda probably has it too.
Okay, then we'll go to Lorinda.
It's Ken Plu.
Yes, ma'am. That's it.
Yeah. Instead of Ken Blue on item number three, general public comment, second paragraph. P-L-E-W-E.
Good catch. Anything else? Commissioner Boraski?
No.
No corrections? All right. Motion? Anybody?
Motion to approve with corrections?
Second.
I have a motion to approve with corrections from Commissioner Wickman, seconded by Commissioner Boraski. Further discussion? Okay, call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Hearing no, opposing, passes 5-0. Okay. General public comment. Three-minute time limit. Start here in Purump, and then we will go to Tonopah. And I have Mr. Zellifer, is that correct? John, coming up.
Thank you, Commissioner Shinoffen. John Zellifer. And I would like to speak to the matter that the county is considering, which is the opening of two roads that would direct traffic from Purump down towards the old Spanish Trail Highway. I would simply like to bring to the commissioners' attention that there is information available from the Nevada State Engineers Office going back to 1919, which shows those roads as existing and in use, if that would be of any help. And also, you can look at the 1963 AAA map showing the roads of southern Nevada, which also clearly show those routes that are being discussed in use. I don't know if that would be of any help in determining the historical.
We're aware of it.
And I'd also like to say as a private citizen that I fully support the efforts to reconnect southern Purump to southern California.
Thank you. And John, would you please give your phone number to Liz? I'll call you after the meeting. Talk about, anybody else here in Purump? Road? No? How about Beatty, Amargosa, Tonopah? Anybody there? Nope. No public comment? Go on to item three for possible action, general road report. General road report by Public Works Director. There we go. Is Mr. Fanning up there?
Yes, he is.
Great.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
I have nothing new at this time to actually add to the current agenda.
Hey, Dave.
Yes?
Can you just give us some anecdotal information about blading Stone Cabin Road 638 and 632? I just want to share with the public what's involved in blading a road.
I'm going to, I'm going to refer that to Stretch.
Yeah, please.
Because I think I know where you're going with this.
Yes.
And the actual amount of time, water.
I want to keep hammering this as people complain that their roads aren't getting any attention. I want to try to reinforce how big this county is and how many roads we have and...
The donations and what people have actually done for us.
Stretch Baker. A lot of those routes out there, the, there's so much traffic with, in the last couple of years with geocaching and whatnot, getting a lot of corduroys and blading it.
And a corduroy is, I mean, we know, but...
The bumps, the short bumps.
Washboard.
People starting and stopping, and it's just, it's really tough on it. This year, it being so dry, we can't haul enough water. We're taking material out.
Can you get a little closer to the mic?
Building up shoulders that are breaking off. We're getting a lot more traffic this, in the last year and a half with the geocachers turning around the middle of the road, breaking the edges off. And each one of these spots, like these two roads, they'll spend a week and a half to two weeks to do those areas.
And it's so that people have an idea of, or anybody who's been to Tonopah, how far away are, we're talking about Stone Cabin Road, how far is that from Tonopah?
It's probably 45 minutes to get to the, where the machines are starting. When they get a little further out there, we've got spots that's two hours one way.
So that's, that's, so for some of them, that's two hours one way of driving time before you can even do any roadwork and that's...
Doesn't include fueling up and looping and...
Right. So that's more than half your day gone, just with transportation.
Yes.
Stretch Baker is Nye County's representative on the Mojave Southern Resource Advisory Council for Transportation and Rights of Way. He received that appointment from the Secretary of the Interior, and he's a valuable member of our group, and we appreciate him. And Dave, we really appreciate you allowing him to participate. That's huge.
You're very welcome. And I appreciate him actually stepping up and actually taking on that challenge as well. You know, there's something else that I'd like to actually share with the, with the board right now is, we have been maintaining the Lower Smoky Valley Road out off of Polon at the request of, obviously, the citizens. And actually, Stretch has stepped up with a crew and actually donated water that we've actually had to manage these roads with because it's been so dry. And the amount of actual, did you just finish that up last month, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So I, there's another avenue of elements that the, the actual public out there that currently are not under cultivation because they can't grow anything at this time of the year, have donated their, their wells and their water for obvious, the same thing that we're talking about at the, at the Stone Cabin Road. So we have actually been hauling water. We would have actually hauled it from Tonopah. But since we were given that water, it obviously has saved us quite ample time and effort and cost in trying to maintain that as well. So there's another area there that needs to be taken into consideration, pointed out by the public or to the public for their help and support on, on supplying materials. So greatly appreciated.
Yes, thank you.
All right. That's a, thank you. Makes me feel better.
Thank you, Stretch.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Some questions for Mr. Fanning. Two items. One is, can you give us an update where we are on Black, Black Road right now?
We are still moving forward through the final phase of plan sets. And I do have one, one of the final phases with me today that I have one correction on before I actually am going to get it on the March, the first meeting in March for actually going out to bid that item. So it's obviously going through the process, and that's currently where we stand with our plans and our actual bid documents. We still have to get those to the DA's office, as we always do, and they actually will have ample time to actually review those. So we're on track for getting that out to bid.
I have another question for you. I asked you to look at an area off of Betty that's apparently you guys went over and graded over in there. Betty and that cross street behind it, the one that the resident, local residents were concerned about with all the dust and everything. And apparently, after they graded it, there's a lot of large rock up on the top. So now they're commenting on that as well, you know, cobble-sized. Maybe you'd want to take a peek at that, and I don't know if there's anything you can do on that or not.
You know, we should have actually used a vibratory roller on that, and we will check on it, and we'll make sure that it gets put back into the condition that it's suitable. So the traffic, being a gravel road, the traffic has actually got roughly a half a mile or better to actually travel, well, actually a mile. I apologize, from Leslie up to Barney. So we will look into it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Dave?
Just one, one other one.
Go ahead.
Gabz, remind me, why are, why is Tonopah handling trash truck duties? It doesn't have anything to do with the equipment. Is it personnel or? What was that?
Broken wing.
Do that again.
The operator up there has a broken arm.
Oh, broken wing. Okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
How was this?
Yeah, got it.
I have one thing.
Go ahead, please, Mr. Commissioner.
Would you get with me on the plant for Symphony Animal Foundation, please?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, was that me? I didn't.
Yes.
Would you get with me?
I will. Yes, sir.
You, in his office.
I didn't mean it that way, Joni.
All right. Anybody else?
I know. I'm giving him a hard time, Gary.
He needs it.
I think he gets plenty. He talks to me every day, so I think he's pulling a hard time. I'd like to thank you, Dave, for all the work you're doing, and I'm sure we have other items that'll come up here today that may engender that. But I know you're moving as quickly as you can on Black Road, and it's not quickly enough for all of us, including you, I know. I know that we just have to follow the process, and it takes a long time. But I do appreciate everything you've done there. I have no other questions, so let's move to number four, unless, Dave, you have something you want to tell us? Everything else?
An observation by myself that was actually made this morning on the way to Tonopah is just south of the Mesquite at 160 intersection, Floyd Construction is, is working on the collapsed line that was actually installed for the detention facility. And I kind of found that to be a unique situation. I didn't know that any repair work was actually going on regardless of the water line, sewer line, whatever, in that area.
Why is that unique? What?
Unique in the fact that it's been open for a while, it's been sitting there with K-rails unguarded, and now all of a sudden, we see them doing work.
Oh.
It's just something that kind of caught me off guard this morning as I was actually passing it in the dark, so...
Is that related to the Black Road at all?
No. Isn't that, Endo, didn't Endo authorize that?
I have no idea.
I thought, I thought you or somebody had said something to me about potentially undermining 160, and that maybe they requested that.
I'm not aware of that, but Commissioner Eastley, it is actually due to the, the water line and everything was put in at one time. So it is actually a part of the entire job. So it's not just a part of the Black job, it's just the entire job for...
I guess that's what I meant, because that water line does run. Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And so, Dave, you weren't notified at all? You found out by driving by it?
No, and I wouldn't be. I wouldn't be, but I just want to make you guys aware of it because it's actually something that we've been trying to just pay attention to.
Right.
And it kind of caught me off guard.
And who put up those K-rails?
I do not know that.
We don't know that? Okay.
I would assume that they were requested by Endo.
Yeah.
To actually keep traffic from pulling off and, and obviously, you know, getting stuck in that hole or...
What's a K-rail?
A concrete barrier that's three feet tall, and it's actually shaped with a conical shape to it to actually sit flat on the ground. It could be anywhere from 10 feet to 20 feet in length.
Lorinda said it's K, like, you know, concrete. K. It's K.
All right. I think we're going to move on to item four now. Item four for possible, thank you, Dave, thank you, Stretch. For possible action, discussion deliberation, set a date, time, and location for public hearing for the resolutions listed below. Commissioners?
Lorinda?
Yeah. What is the recommended date, time, location?
It's on the...
The next.
I'd like to recommend a date of March 6th at...
There you go.
During the regular 1015 timed agenda item.
Second.
All right. I have a motion to set the date for March 6th by Commissioner Wickman, seconded by Commissioner Boraski. Further discussion? Hearing none.
Yeah, actually.
Okay.
May I?
No.
I just wanted to say one thing. Please notice your prior page. There are 12 items on there, and that's pretty much normal for the way these are put on the agenda. Thanks to the innovative brainstorming of our contractor, Jerry Elkins, has automated the files. What used to take me, well, what took me 15 minutes two months ago, now all I have What used to take me, well, what took me 15 minutes two months ago, now all I have to do is go in and briefly review them and assign the resolution number, and that's why you got 30 of those puppies on there at one time.
So, when, assuming that the board adopts the resolutions on these roads, what percent completion are we at? Will we be at?
I just submitted a report with their invoice. You know, guessing, it has to be a guess, because we don't know what roads are out there until they're actually out there looking for them. So, my feeling on the whole thing is 40 to 50% of it.
Wow, that is terrific. Okay.
But I, but don't hold me that. I don't want my feet to the fire on that one, because there's no way to know until they're out there.
Best guess.
Best guess.
So, we'll have, we'll have these on the agenda for the rest of the year.
You betcha.
Good, okay.
You betcha.
All right, then. No further discussion, call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, passes 5-0. All right.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn. We're adjourned back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And we're going to move directly into the 10:30 item, which is recess to the Nye County License and Liquor Board, and that goes to Commissioner Boraski.
Thank you. Would like to open this meeting at the Nye County Licensing and Liquor Board for February 7th, 2012. Item one, for possible action, approval of minutes in Nye County Licensing and Liquor Board for January 3rd, 2012. Were any changes or corrections?
I didn't see any. Motion to approve. They looked good.
Second.
I have motion by Commissioner Eastley, second by Commissioner Shinoffin. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is Tony there? I can't see him.
Yes, I am here.
Okay. Passes 6-0.
Loud and clear.
Yeah. I didn't see you, so I didn't know if you were there or not, so.
I'm always here.
No, 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 once you weren't, so. Item two, general public comment, three minute time per person. Requested to be limited to items not listed on the agenda, no action be taken by the board. Any general public comment in Perump?
Don't see any.
Hearing none. Any general public comment in Tonopah, Beatty, or any other areas that are out there? Hearing none will close that. And I don't think we've got any.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
And we're adjourned.
Jeepers, I didn't think we'd ever get through that agenda.
I know it.
Thank you. Thank you, board. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, we have reconvened then as Nye County Board of Commissioners, and we're going to move directly to our item number eight, which is Commissioner Manager's comments. And we'll start with Commissioner Shinoffin.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I was pleased to attend the Legislative Committee hearing on Public Lands, I believe it was a week ago, in Carson. It was very informative. They did talk about the wild horses. They talked about the sage grouse, and when we have the sage grouse, I'll go into more detail when we have that item for our own comments. But I did want to say that Ira, I'm trying to think of, get his last name right, Hanson? I'm not quite sure. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
I think he hit the nail on the head when he told the Bureau of Land Mismanagement that if they had not pulled off the ranchers, they wouldn't have a problem with the grouse. And he pointed that out very eloquently and clearly. And there was a lot of support not to list it, actually. At that meeting, I found there were more people that saw that this was a problem that they created on their own. And on the other item, the wild horse, the comment you made earlier, Madam Chair, about it was nice to see them all working together, and it was, you were afraid because they were all working together. I thought that was very apt. Here, it was, it wasn't reality, this hearing, to me. It was people who had time to come and lobby for the horses, and only a couple of ranchers who are losing their business because of these horses. And the people lobbying for the horses went on and on at length about the special interest groups that were trying to stop them. And my only comment that I had to make was that they too are a special interest group. So, there's not going to be.
Did you say that to them?
Yes, I did, on the record. I said, yes, you're a special interest group too. So, they each have their points, but I think Commissioner Wickman, if she could get her planned to Washington and get the horses moved to parks, it would be great.
Central Park in New York City?
Yeah, put them there.
I have been told that's not going to work.
I think it's a great solution, or open up acreage for feral dogs and cats, but that's my own opinion. I'm sure it's not shared by many. So, I was, both those, and then I did tour the Palo Verde Plant in Arizona, which was just great to see the way it's handled. It's so safe, it's unbelievable. Everything's redundant. They have two other areas to cool down, the tower that aren't in the facility, away from the facility. Everything's redundant. With all the redundancies they have to do and all the safety measures, they're still the cheapest way to produce energy is nuclear power plants. And they have their stack of used fuel sitting there waiting to be transported, and of course, I would like to see them transported to the hole in the ground that we already have ready for it. That's where I was, and Commissioner Wickman, I will fleet you the papers that I've told you about for a week and a half, and I haven't got to you. I had planned to be there this morning, but, and I was going to give them to you there. But that was it for those trips, and they were very informative. I got to meet some other people who see it like we do, or like I do, I'm sorry. And I will, again, I'll talk about the sage grouse when we have that item, because that's a big, a big boondoggle, I think, that they're trying to foist on us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shinoffin. How about you, Commissioner Hollis?
Yes, I have a couple of things here. I attended a Water Board meeting, their last one, and there was a recommendation, Darrell? Darrell? There was a recommendation by the board that to make a liaison commissioner available to, between the Board of County Commissioners and the Water Board. Darrell?
This is Darrell Lacy. The, I think what Commissioner Hollis is referring to is there was discussion about the protest for the Rollston Valley applications that were approved by this board at the last meeting, I believe it was, as well as the Water District also voted to protest. The questions came up about areas that might have conflict or redundancy between the Water District and the Board, and that maybe having a liaison commissioner might help to improve the communications and understanding who's going to do what in regards to the water issues in the county.
Thank you, Darrell. Actually, you stole my thunder. That was my number one on my comments this morning. Is there anything else, Commissioner Hollis?
Yes, I attended, I attended a nuclear waste conference in Washington, DC last week. Most of it was due to the Blue Ribbon Commission's final report. I'm here to report that there was no surprises. Consent basis, we've been talking about that for 30 years. Transportation, transportation is safe as far as spent nuclear fuel. The only thing new was making a government private entity to run the project instead of DOE. FedCor, I believe, is what they're referring it to now. I think Nye County would not be against that, because we've seen how DOE runs things. But an organization like TBA, TBA runs very well in most instances. But the consent basis is, the Blue Ribbon Commission is staking their claim out that Sweden and Finland's way of getting a community to sign on to a repository. Well, Sweden and Finland don't have states to deal with. I'd like to see the Blue Ribbon Commission really try that here in the US. I don't think it, I think, I don't think they're going to get much leadway other than Nye County, which is, I think, a consent basis community. Of course, I think all of this is going forward to Carlsbad really wants the waste, and I think that's where this committee is headed to. And, you know, I asked the question, why didn't you bring the Blue Ribbon Commission to Nye County? If you're going to bring it to Carlsbad, why didn't you bring the Blue Ribbon Commission to Nye County so that we could show you that we do have local support? They didn't have an answer for that other than, you know, we didn't want to be political, we didn't want to look like.
Oh, my God.
We didn't want to.
Sorry, Gary.
We didn't want to.
They didn't want to be political? That's all they are.
I understand. I'm just telling you what they told me.
Yeah, I know. Sorry.
I had to laugh at the general, because, you know, he was trying his best to be nice, but I just told him that, you know, that was all hogwash, that we know who was on that committee. Pete Dimenich was on that committee. We know what the Senator wants to do. He wants to bring that waste to Carlsbad. I told, I told him that there's plenty of waste to go around. I mean, I think there's plenty of high-level waste. There's greater than Class C. That waste could go to Carlsbad if they want. I do not think that nuclear spent fuel, salt is a reliable place to put nuclear spent fuel, though. But, you know, there is other communities out there that's wanting this piece of cake. So, you know, we spent $15 million, 30 years. I mean, that mountain is the most studied mountain in the history of rock, and we're still trying to study it. And it's just, you know, I spend a lot of my time on this issue, and to go over, the Blue Ribbon Commission, to go over the same things that we went over for the last 30 years, and all of a sudden they come up with consent basis. I mean, that is just, it's unbelievable to think that they're going to get two repositories and possibly two interim repositories. The cost and time is unimaginable. I mean, it's unquestionable of how you're going to do that. You can't even get one repository in 30 years. So, there.
Commissioner Hollis?
Yes.
Did you have an opportunity to meet with Senator Heller?
Yes, I did. And I laid it down to him that it would be really nice, before he puts a bill in that affects Nye County, that he consult Nye County. It's just bad when we, we hear that he's going to put a bill in 10 minutes before he's going to get in front of the floor of the United States Senate and propose this bill. You know, I just think that he has an obligation to consult with us before he does that.
I agree.
So, yes, I did.
Can I interrupt?
I did relay that to him. I also want you to know that I did put a pitch in for, I know this is not in my district, but it's in Joni's district, but Payute Mesa, I've been trying to get four monitoring wells in Oasis Valley to monitor the contamination if it gets that far. They've had this information for months. I supplied it to them again. I told them this is not, this is a health, safety, and welfare issue. EM has money they can divert over and let us drill those wells, or at least two wells. And hopefully, maybe I'll get something out of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hollis.
Hopefully, Nye County will get something out of it, yeah.
I didn't hear that. What'd you say, Joni? I didn't hear that.
She's talking about you, not to you.
No, I said, hopefully, Nye County will get something out of it, yes. And it doesn't matter that it's in my district. You're a representative on those issues, so thank you.
Madam Chair.
And Commissioner Hollis, I'd like to tell everyone else that I believe that Senator Heller did hear Commissioner Hollis, because at the Lincoln Reagan Day Dinner.
Yes.
He announced that Gary had been in his office, and he was a handful to deal with.
Madam Chair.
I'm sometimes capable of doing that.
If I could.
Commissioner Shinoffin.
Thank you. If I could briefly, the BRC, the Blue Ribbon Commission, I share the misgivings that were stated by Commissioner Hollis, and so they tried to find a silver bullet, and they couldn't even find a casing, I guess.
Yes.
It was a colossal waste of time. I only, I think the only, and let me take that back. The only thing that I think positive came out of it is, again, they talked about local support, and again, we reiterated, there is local support, so, but I don't know that they heard us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shinoffin. Commissioner Eastley?
Based on the newspaper articles I read, they did hear us, because there was specific mention that there was local support in Nye County. So, I'll just add that as a little postscript.
Yeah.
Will you share information with us about the county's economic development plan? And I believe you had a meeting with Mike Skaggs. How did that go?
I had a teleconference with Mike, who is the Deputy Director of the Governor's Office of Economic Development, regarding a strategy for Nye County to go in as a region for all of Nye County, as the state is dividing up into regions and people are, communities are combining their strengths and collaborations for the best way to position themselves. And I was just strategizing with him. I'll be, we'll be coming forward to the board with our plan later in the year, but when we have to do our grant requests. But he was very complimentary to Nye County's performance since we have taken over our responsibility for our own economic development. The quarterly reporting that we've been doing, he was, he was very appreciative of, and said that he was very pleased with the way that he had seen us using the grant money that we had received. So, that was a very nice.
And I think that is particularly complimentary to our grants administrator.
Absolutely. Amy's been doing a great job.
Amy Fanning.
On those quarterly, coordinating and collecting the data and submitting those quarterly reports. Thank you.
That's it.
You have? Commissioner Boraski?
Yes. I attended a Desert Tortoise Sabotat meeting yesterday. I only stayed for about an hour and a half, because it was Madness Monday, or whatever we call it, the day before Commissioner's meeting. And down in Perump, you got to take a number to get into Pam's office, talk to Mr. Fanning, Brian, or, you know, some of the other folks to kind of get clarifications on things. And no offense to anyone, I just say that's what it's like down there, so. But anyways, the only comment I heard out of that meeting while I was there before they went to Tortoise Heaven, or whatever they call it, where they keep tortoises in Las Vegas, and was that the same players are in there, you'll get the same results. And I heard this from the same person before, so hopefully Darrell will keep that guided and going in the right direction, and I believe he will. I also attended the Water Board meeting, probably got about half of it in before I got pulled out to something else, but I don't have anything out of the report other than what Commissioner Hollis said. And I think that, oh, tomorrow, we'll have another Oasis Outreach Meeting in Perump at 11:30. They're kitty-corner from the Moose Lodge. Anybody wants to attend, it's an open invitation to any of the county-level people or town people in Perump. And that's it.
Thank you very much. I have only.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Hollis? Yes?
I have one other little thing I'd like to say before I forget it, if I may.
Please.
One thing in that Blue Ribbon Commission report that we did, that one of the things that we hammered on through all those Blue Ribbon Commission meetings was that Yucca Mountain is the law. The law of the land is that Yucca Mountain is the only site in that. That is in there. I hope that I get some credit for hammering that message, but my, the staff that Nye County has, we hammered that message from the day that they opened the first meeting until the end, that Yucca Mountain is the law. I just want to make sure that at least one of the recommendations that Nye County hammered on did get into the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hollis. I only have one left. As I said, Gary stole my thunder. The first thing I was going to ask for was an agenda item on the next Commissioner's meeting, to add a BOCC liaison position to the, for the Water District. And the second item I have is, I'm going to run the risk here of possibly making somebody mad, but that's okay. Last year, Washoe County was able to block a development that was not in line with their ordinance to control the transfer of water out of their home basin. On November 17th, I asked staff for a draft ordinance to be brought forward to this board. Maybe it would be possible now to get that done? Okay? I would like somebody to look at Washoe's ordinance that controls that and see if it's something that this board would have an appetite for. I'd appreciate that. Pam, thank you. We are going to move on to our 10:45 agenda item, which is possible action as a public hearing, discussion, and deliberation to adopt, amend, and adopt or reject Nye County Bill Number 201118. And I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against this item in Perump?
See, nobody coming forward.
Anybody who'd like to speak for or against it in any of the other outlying areas? Beatty, Amargosa?
There are no, no Perump Town Board members who want to offer public comment on this item.
We have a Town Board Manager, a Town Board Member and Town Manager, but neither one are moving.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anyone here in Tonopah? Okay, a closed public hearing.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
With an effective date of, Sam? With an effective date of February 27th.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0. We'll move on to our consent agenda item.
Madam Chair.
The first one, yes?
Like to.
Yeah, just to. Yeah, just a-
Go ahead.
Just a second.
Yes.
First item is discussion of any item from the consent agenda items that need to be reviewed before a decision is made. Commissioner Shinholen.
I'd like to pull letter M, like mom, for discussion.
Are there any others? Okay, I will, item L has been dropped entirely. Correct, Pam?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
And I would like to pull item S just for discussion. Okay, sorry, Commissioner.
Ready, Sam? Motion to approve consent agenda items C through K, N through R, and T.
Second. And I'll be back in a minute.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposed? That passes 4-0. Commissioner Boraski has left the room for a moment.
Do we have a timeout?
You bet. We'll take a 10-minute break.
Smoke them if you got them.
Not if you're sitting next to me. Oh, you are, sorry.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
You know, I talked to Kim Walker yesterday.
Okay, we'll reconvene if Dan's done with his. We lost our Perump. We lost all the boys. There's one.
We just sent two women in to do the job.
Did you say boys?
Two women take the place of five men.
Did you say boys?
Yeah.
Just said that. We just sent two women in there, in here, to do the job of three men.
I heard boys.
In an endearing, in an endearing term, they meant that.
Okay, we have enough to reconvene. So we are on item 9L, which was polled.
No.
Sorry, we'll go to 9M. And Dan, you had some comments.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. This has to do with the right-ofways, or the BLM right-ofways that we acquired to do Gamebird Road. After we were informed that we could do this, and we were given notice, then the BLM decided that they had additional requirements for us to plant two mesquite trees for every one we took out, and then water them for a year. Apparently because there is a bird that eats mistletoe that grows on these mesquite trees. But mistletoe is a parasite. It actually damages the tree over time. A bunch of trees were taken out of the Amargosa Conservancy recently. It just seems like another Bureau of Land Mismanagement action to me. I'm going to plant trees that are only viable if a parasite grows in them so a bird can eat them. And then those parasites will eventually kill the trees. So I would like us to send a letter back to BLM and tell them why this is not a good idea. I realize in the future, they may make it a requirement, but if they make it a requirement upfront, that's something that we might have to live with. Again, this was tacked on later, and I think it's useless.
Thank you, Commissioner Shinholen. Dave, do you have anything you want to add to this?
Yes, and if the board so desires, we can file a protest for this. And like Commissioner Shinholen said, it is actually something that the application was approved back in 2007. Now that we're actually starting construction of that right-ofway, we are now actually hit with this additional stipulation in order to move this project through there. So that's the only thing that I need to add to the comment.
Could I ask you what your recommendation to this board would be?
Is to protest.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shinholen, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to send a formal protest to the BLM against having to replant the trees that were taken out.
Can we do that the way this item is structured? Okay, thank you. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Third.
I have a third. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Hang on, I'm writing notes. Okay, let's move on to item number 9S. I only have one question on this. We have had recent discussions, Pam, on the agenda items and making sure that they're being looked at by legal and looked at by finance. The one thing that now I notice that is missing is on the back page, the second page, when they put in there, it's budgeted, it's not budgeted, or A, they can absorb it. The paperwork says how. And I haven't seen any answers to how that any of these are when they indicate A, they can be absorbed. This particular item, you know, I have no problem with this, and I believe this is Bill Beck.
We need this.
Yeah, we do, and I agree with that. And I'm not, I'm not throwing a fit about the item. I am just simply saying that if they're going to put on the back of the form that it can be absorbed in their budget, I would like to know how.
Okay.
There's a comment place for that.
Okay. I would assume that this is because they are below the, what the forecast was for their general fund budget. Is that correct, or no?
I don't know what-
We don't know, yeah.
If they're funding it from, you know, where they budgeted grant match, or what.
Right.
I don't know.
Okay, so what I would want to know on that piece of paper then is, did they overstate their estimate on their budget or their needs for their budget? Or was there some illumination of, in the budget that allowed for them to absorb this? Now, I'm not picking on Bill Beck, I'm not picking on the Sheriff's Office, and I'm not picking on this item. I'm just saying that it's been consistently coming through where there are no answers on how, when they mark that they can absorb it in their budget. So I'd just like to see that in the front. And Joni, I appreciate what you're saying, but you did exactly the same thing I did.
Yeah, you're right.
You tried to make assumptions and figured it out. I'd like to know for sure before I make those assumptions, and I'll entertain a motion.
Sheriff is there if you'd like me to ask him.
Do you know how it's being done?
Is it for the sheriff?
Sheriff's file?
Yes, it's just a contract modification. That's what it is. It wasn't going to be an increase in the budget per se, it's a contract modification that we'll look for at this time.
Well, it says that it's, that you're absorbing $7,992 in your existing budget. Your, the original contract was for $10,588, the amount due. You'll have a credit of $2,596. So there is some you're going to have to be absorbing in your budget.
It was being-
You get the point that I'm making.
It's being absorbed through the, through the leads online. We went back to them, and so we're absorbing it through the, through the contract modification. I, Captain Beck was working with the leads online, and we can't, he was able to come up with a way of budgeting through the existing contract, just making a modification.
Yes, and I understand that. All I'm saying is what was budgeted was $7,900, and what is now going to be budgeted is $10,500. So there is a difference, and you have indicated on the back of this that it is going to be absorbed in your budget, and I understand that.
Thank you.
And I don't want to make a big deal out of it. It's just if these come forward in the future, if they're going to be absorbed, then answer the question of how, so that we don't have to assume that we know what you're talking about.
Well, it's my budget, it's being absorbed through the budget. You know, I'm answered for my budget by law, so we're absorbing it through our budget. Most of it was through a contract modification.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Yes, please, Commissioner Shinholen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes 5-0.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Did I get a motion, or did we pass items N through, all the way to T? Okay, thank you. I just didn't mark it. Commissioners, we can, we are coming up on the closed meeting stuff. Do you want to go to closed session now, or do you want to wait until the end?
End.
Okay, we'll wait to the end.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have some staff members from Veteran Services here. Could we, could we go to 31A, please? I'd like to get them back to work so I don't have to fight the veterans.
Okay, put it on the record, Joni. Motion to approve item 31A. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is all those in favor?
Aye.
Further discussion?
Aye. Anyone opposed?
I had further discussion.
You do? I'm sorry.
I did.
Go ahead, please.
I was just concerned that this is, I don't fully support the veterans. This is just, we have to be careful that they only work the hours stated because that's all the state is giving us. So if somebody is going to be monitoring that for whoever it is that comes in in the interim.
Everybody look at Pam.
Well, I, anyway, so that was my concern, and that's it. And our VSO officers here at the table, maybe, is there something you want to say in that regard, or?
The position is 40 hours-
Take your name and spell your last name for the record, please.
Ken Shockley, S-H-O-C-K-L-E-Y, Director of Veteran Services.
Thank you.
I believe that the position is stated as 40 hours per week that the state would provide for the Director of Veteran Services position. That would allow our office to maintain the office to be opened, and that way, we could maintain our services to our veterans.
And is that the amount of hours you're putting in now?
No, that is not the hours that I am putting in now. However, it will keep our office open and maintain our office.
Okay, but only up to 40 hours?
Up to 40 hours per week. The alternative is, we close the doors and not have anybody there.
I understand that.
And then we have no services while I am out.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you. Call for the question.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Hollis, did you have something?
Call for the question.
Oh, we've already voted on it. It already passed 5-0. Okay, we're going to move back to item 11G.
She's saying we didn't call for the vote, the question.
Yes, we did, because I apologize, because I took the vote before I allowed any further discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you want me to do it again?
No, it was 5-0, or it was-
5-0?
Yes.
Yeah. But did Commissioner Shinholen vote?
Yes.
Okay, 5-0.
Yeah. Everybody good?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, you're welcome. We'll move on to item 11- We'll move on to item 11G. This is for possible action. It's a discussion deliberation regarding request to set a date, time, and location for a public hearing on bill number 2012-02.
I'd like to propose this bill and set a date, time, and location for March 6, 2012 at 10:45 a.m., right here in Tonopah.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. Item-
Um, yeah, hang on.
Got to read it.
Bill number, bill number 2012-02 is a bill proposing to amend chapter 8.04 of the Nye County Code related to licensing, regulating, and controlling the use and sale of fireworks by removing the limitation on consumer display permits issued by Nye County, reducing the fee for consumer display fireworks, allowing safe and sane fireworks by the general public, providing for the severability, constitutionality, and effective date hereof, and other matters properly relating thereto. And Commissioner Wickman, my apologies to the folks in Perump. I got several text messages. I was in outer space and I confused two bills. That's why I asked if there was any comment on the other one. I was just voting on the one-
Oh, you mean the one, the one on Beatty?
I was thinking about the one for fireworks, yeah. I was voting on the one for Beatty but thinking about the one for fireworks, so my apologies.
Yeah, they were scratching their head back here wondering what-
Yeah, I know, I got text messages from a bunch of them, so.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item 11H. Wait a minute, did we already, no, 11H. This is possible action. It's discussion deliberation regarding the hiring of a county manager.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Hollis and I put this on together. We're both quite concerned about what we're going to do. Apparently there's no formal decision been made and we would like to get some answers on what we're going to do. Or is it, we're going to do nothing? So, somebody can answer that?
Anybody have any comments? Commissioner Shinholfen.
Yeah, Madam Chair, nothing was done because it hadn't been agendized and now it is agendized. I would like to ask Ms. Webster if she would consider rescinding her retirement.
Yes, I would for up to two years, but not past that, depending on the pleasure of the board, if they want to.
Can we make a decision on this? It just says discussion and deliberation, but it doesn't say that-
Says for possible action.
Oh, okay, I'm just going by that.
You can take any action you want with this with regards to the hiring of a county manager.
Then I would make a motion, Madam Chair, to begin contract negotiations with Pam Webster.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. That's going to come back in front of us with the, with the contract, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And how do we do this, Brian? Oh, you better ask any opposed.
Is there any opposed?
Aye.
Passes four one. Go ahead, Commissioner Easley.
What's the process now? I don't remember what we did for anybody else. Are you going to sit down with her and negotiate or Pam, were you?
If you want me to sit down and negotiate with her, I can certainly do that. I don't know how you did it before either, but I'm certainly willing to do that, to come up with a, with a contract.
Yeah, that's what we did previously for me.
That's what I thought.
We developed a contract, brought it forward for your review.
And then brought it back to the board.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If there's a, the DA can probably stop me and probably will. So this, we can only discuss county manager at this time? Can we direct staff?
Yes.
Could we direct, no. Are you shaking his head already? Then I won't. We'll have another agenda item for the, for the other part then.
Actually, if you don't mind me saying a few things, this board in the past, a past board, found it was prudent to establish the position of Assistant County Manager for the purpose of having the most qualified, best-prepared individual available to assume the county manager's position. It's part of the county manager's job to identify the Assistant County Manager and prepare them for taking over when the county manager leaves.
It's actually the law.
It's, yeah.
It's the law. There's a-
So I believe that the past board acted with great foresight because they did give us someone who is in the pipeline and I'd like to continue that. So that's the only comment I have.
Yeah, there is a Nevada revised statute that sets forth, or that states that the county manager has the authority by law to identify and appoint an Assistant County Manager.
Commissioner Easley, is that then ratified by the board? Is that an action that's ratified by the board?
Yes, because the contract comes before us.
Okay, thank you. Once I get all my pieces of paper in the right order.
We don't have to agree with who she picks or who any county manager picks, but they have the right to identify someone.
Okay.
What's the NRS?
Gary, I'll have to, it's, it's under the statute for county government and I'll have to get that number for you. I see Brian looking now, but I'll get that for you.
Well, I just think that there's people out there that are asking about this, this position, so that's one reason why I wanted to put it on there, so.
Oh, now they know. It passed four one. So we'll move on to item 12A. That is for possible action, discussion deliberation to appoint seven members of the Nye County Park and Recreation Commission due to seven expired terms. And these terms will expire February of 2016.
I have a question about this item.
Please.
My concern about this item is the same as it was for the Central Nevada Museum Board. Is there a resolution that establishes representational districts? Yes. Do you want to trail this and go?
Yeah, let's trail this for a few minutes and we'll go to item 12B. This is discussion. I'm sorry?
No, I'm sorry, I was just trying to-
Okay.
I was trying to get your attention.
12B, this is discussion deliberation to appoint one member to the Board of Equalization due to one resignation. And this term expires 2015. Yes.
Sorry, now, Madam Chair.
Yes, Dan.
Bob Alvis is one of the two applicants. I know this gentleman, he's worked for years as the, he retired from the federal government as a budget analyst. He's very familiar with the numbers like I'm not. And, and he's a, been a resident for almost 12 years. And I would recommend appoint Bob, Robert Alvis to this position. That's my motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Does anyone have an alternative?
Staff has done the research on this item. They're recommending appointing Dick Gardner from, Richard Gardner from Beatty, and that's my motion to follow staff's recommendation.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that passes four one. Move on to item 13A, discussion deliberation on an interstate interlocal contract between Nevada Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Welfare and Supportive Services, and Nye County District Attorney. This is for funding of child support enforcement activities through 2013 through 2015.
Staff's recommendation is to approve this. This is consistent with past contracts, providing for reimbursement of two-thirds of the cost for operating this department. My motion is to approve based on staff's recommendation.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in, or is there any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. How much is our part of this? It said we pay up to a third. So we're going to pay up to a third of 14, or 1,400,000?
Yeah, it depends on how many, what their caseload is.
So it's case by case?
It's, it's based on caseload.
And this, and this, this will fund people to go out and collect child support? Is that what, just to clarify this for?
It funds the operation of the Child Support Division within the District Attorney's Office.
If I could, this is a standard contract that we do, I think, every like three years.
Right.
We get a grant from the state that funds two-thirds of the operations of the Child Support Enforcement Office.
It's a pass-through from the federal government.
Pass-through from the federal government, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And I will say that this was negotiated through all of the District Attorney's Office with the state. This was a process, probably took about six months to get this contract.
Right, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Is there anyone opposed? Passes five zero. We're going to return to item 12A. Did you find the answers for Commissioner Easley?
Well, actually, Mr. Coonsy was much quicker than I was. Basically, it's at large, other than the school district representative.
That's fine, then my motion would be to appoint those who have applied.
Second.
I have a motion and two seconds. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That passes five zero.
Madam Chair, I do have one question. I wasn't sure, I wanted to take a look at the back, the backup. I noticed it's talking about seven.
We don't have seven applicants.
We don't.
Okay, because-
We have to just keep promoting the other two.
Yeah, it's because we have five and four, the way the split is. So I think we're going to have to figure out who's got what term.
Oh, yeah, that's a great point.
Oh.
Because we'd have to go back to when-
It says these terms will all expire February 2016.
And they, there's no way they can all expire 2016 because there was a stagger of five and four.
Those are, let me, let me-
Should we trail this again for bit and return to it? Can we return to it? We've already-
I could look at this ahead of time.
Okay, when, when we're ready to do this, I'll just make a motion to reconsider and-
Okay, all right, that'd be great. We'll move on to item 16A. Go to the Treasurer's Report. 16A was pulled because we don't have one.
Yes, we do. There's a Treasurer's Report in the backup.
I didn't know that you had discussion. If you have discussion, we can-
I just have a question.
Okay, all right. We'll open up item 16A. Commissioner Easley?
Yeah, just one question and anybody can answer this. I just noticed that there's a new disclaimer at the bottom. Unaudited, subject to change to the extent information provided by third parties cannot be verified, therefore this report is subject to audit. What third parties are giving information on the County Treasurer's Report? And why can't it be verified? I didn't realize third parties-
I saw that comment myself and I did not understand it, but I can follow up with-
Will you follow up? I'd like to know what third parties outside of county government are providing financial information on county finance.
Okay.
All right, thank you. That's all.
And that's not an action item, so we'll just move on. I was asked if I could pause before we take 20A in order for staff to participate, so-
Well, let's go to 20B.
We'll go to 20B.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion on item 20B. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I believe there is.
Yes, Dan, please go ahead.
I believe there is. I'm trying to find it. These newfangled computers. Oh, here we go.
I never have to boot up my three-winged-
I know. Here we go.
And it never runs out of batteries.
Yeah.
And it never goes into sleep mode.
It never goes into sleep mode.
Only the behind-the-wheel does.
On page two, item 1.4, Revenue Collection. Monies received must be remitted to the Nye County Treasurer no less, no less often than monthly. I think I understand, I, I understand it, it just seems awkward. I don't know if there's another way to say that or should I just?
We can say it at a minimum, monthly at a minimum, if that would sound better.
No less than once a month.
Yeah.
Okay, no less than, that's, it's something easier, more concise. Maybe I'm trying to find a peanut in a ton of, you know.
Bob Swaddell.
Yeah, there you go, so.
That was the most interesting compliment I ever received.
Did that have something to do with baboons?
Yes.
Yeah, I remember, okay.
So, with that correction, if the, if you would, there was a motion and a second one there. Would you modify your motion with that correction?
Yes, I will accept that friendly amendment.
And the friendly second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, passes five zero. We'll go on to item 20C. This is for action. It's a discussion and deliberation regarding directing the transfer of Nye County Treasurer Trust property for the public purpose.
Motion to adopt resolutions 2012-01 and 2012-02.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll give it a second, but I want discussion on this.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, Commissioner Boraski.
Yes, I have an individual, I actually have a group of people that would like to also have some Treasurer's Trust properties pulled. I was under the assumption that the time had closed on that, so I need to get back with these individuals. I have an email, I can't read it. I don't have my glasses on and I don't want it read anyway. No, no, there's, there's a couple statements in here that I need to get corrected.
Well, these are transfers, these are transfers directly into the towns of Tonopah and the towns of Perump for public purposes.
Okay, this is-
It might not apply.
The individual groups did have a time period with which to contact the Treasurer's Office for-
Well, so does local government, so does Tonopah and Perump have, they got the time, same timelines. They were given the documents the same time as everybody else.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I did confirm with the Treasurer's Office that, that the timeline was, actually, they can receive requests up to the first meeting in March, but not after that.
Oh, so we've still got, you've got time.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Because of their timeliness of notification.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Shinholfen, I believe you had something to say, yes.
I'm, yeah, full of, full of comments this morning, I guess. Number 10 and 11 under the Perump, what they asked to be pulled says public purpose use is in providing greeting sign and welcoming station to town. And the two properties are up on, one of them's on Road Runner and one of them's up on Road Runner, and one of them's up on Black Rock Avenue. I don't know how that is, how you're going to put greeting signs when it's not anywhere, you know, near the, where you come into town. So I kind of, I've got a problem with at least that one. There's a couple others that I'm, have concerns about, but those two in particular seem like they're not, they can't be used for that purpose.
Madam Chair, is Mr. Kolbarger in the audience down there?
There he is. When I started talking, I didn't see him.
Oh. Okay, well...
He's coming up.
Actually, Commissioner Schenhoff and Commissioner Boraski both. I'd like to ask, Brian, is it, the item that's before us, Brian, is to direct the transfer of to these two towns. So do we need to get into the details of what these towns want to use these for if they have signified that they are for public purpose? Do we need to belabor that?
No.
And I don't, I kind of get the idea that we're drifting off track if we do that.
Then I will draw my comments and deal with that.
Possibly, Dan, you could talk to Bill on the side?
Yeah, I, I won't retract my comments. I sure, sure'd love to talk to him on the side, but I can't support this the way it is. So, go ahead, please.
Call for the question.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, passes 4-1. Thank you.
Thank you, County Commissioner.
We'll return to Item 20A.
Remember, Bill, it has to be used for a public purpose.
We'll return to Item 20A, and this is for possible action. It's a discussion and deliberation to ratify the county manager's selection of comptroller.
Madam Chair, make a, make a motion to approve Susan Paprocki.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
You deserve it, Susan.
Thank you for that comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Congratulations.
Keep up the good work.
She looks like she's going to cry.
It's all that anticipation and then that anticlimax. It just goes through.
Anticipation of what she's in for.
Anybody who puts up with me emailing her 17 times a year asking what the mileage rate is.
Okay, we'll move on to Item 22A, and this is for action. It's a discussion and deliberation to approve purchase of a Dodge four-wheel-drive, three-quarter-ton diesel crew cab truck with a bed cover to use for fleet mail and towing services from Nevada State Purchasing and can be funded from Fund 401 Capital Projects. I have one comment to make. Last year, a little over a year ago, this same item came to us, and it said that that vehicle was nearly 200, had nearly 200,000 miles on it. Now, this agenda item, I cannot find any difference between this one and the last one, and that vehicle is approaching 200,000 miles. So what's the mileage on this vehicle? Does anybody know?
It must have backed up a lot.
Butch, it must have backed up a lot. That was excellent.
Kudos.
You are definitely the Still Waters that Run Deep.
Is there anyone there in Perump who can answer that question, Gary?
Is Bob Jones in the audience? If you would like to able this, I'll get an answer.
I supported it then, and I still support it.
Yeah, it's something that we passed up last time, I think. With the, with the backup that was in there this time about the match from the...
The school district does write in there.
School district and whatnot. I didn't, either it wasn't in there, or I didn't catch it last time, so I support that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0.
Yeah, but you need to find out if they backed up a lot.
That was really good.
I will definitely. I think only when the transmission freezes.
Remember Ferris Bueller's Day Off?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Item 23A. This is for possible action. It's a discussion deliberation regarding bid 2011-31, replacement of the jail control panel, and awarding of the bid can be funded from 402 Special Capital Projects.
This was a long and painful process, Pam.
But we're here to celebrate today.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion. Or is there any discussion? Well, does it fail?
For some reason, oh, for some reason, I don't...
23A.
Sorry.
My backup is missing. Oh, wait, here it is. It was hiding. All right.
Did you reboot?
Yes, you rebooted her.
I had one tab that was hiding on top of another one. That's why I...
Can we get along here?
My tabs never hide.
Along, great. There were three bids received on, on this project. It was the recommendation of Mark Hatfield with the ID, IT Department and Purchasing to award the bid to Sierra Detention Systems of Brighton, Colorado. They were the lowest, most responsive bidder. And that is my motion to follow Mr. Hatfield's and Judy's recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Do I have to include in my motion to execute the contract?
Please do.
I'm going to amend my motion to include that.
You amend your second. Okay, I have an amended motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Judy. I saw you come in.
That was difficult.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
220,000 miles is the actual odometer reading.
Even though it's approaching 200, he is backing up. You're right.
Now he's going forward again.
I think we've had problems with it in the last couple of months, breaking down on the road, so...
Yes.
It was a typo.
Yeah. Well, just so you know where my vehicle is, it's in the shop. So's everybody. Is it backing up too? So's Joe. It's closely approaching 200,000. Okay, Item 27A for possible action. Discussion and deliberation regarding submission of scoping comments to the Bureau of Land Management, Western Region Sage Grouse Planning Strategy and Instructional Memorandum 2012-043. Commissioner Schenhoff, I believe you had comments?
Yes, Commissioner Hollis.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Schenhoff, and you had comments. Do I need to take a second first?
Yes, you do.
No.
Okay, I do have a second. I have a motion and a second. For further discussion, go ahead, Commissioner Schenhoff.
Thank you. This is the, this was the big topic at the Legislative Lands Meeting that I went to, and again, to reiterate, and, and I, I'm not sure if Darryl can tell me, is, is there a place in these comments where we encourage them to go back to allowing ranching? Because if not...
If I can comment on that?
You can, go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner Easley.
We could probably include comments like that. They would be disregarded, because we're, we are commenting on a document.
On their instructional...
Yes, yeah.
And the planning strategy.
Yeah, but wouldn't that go to some of the reasons why they're trying to declare them is their habitat is dispersing, their habitat's dispersing, because they pulled ranchers off those areas, and then the trees and the junipers have encroached, and, and I mean, you know, it's a direct relation to it, but that's...
Commissioner Schenhoff, and actually, if you will look at one of the prior environmental assessments on other, I'll have to provide one for you, but habitat fragmentation, they consider that being done by two-track roads that have been there since prior to 1905. So I understand your concern, yes.
This is Darryl Lacy. If I can make a couple of comments, please.
Yes, please.
Of course, we do ask them to look at Title VII of the Ni County Code, which requests that federal agencies coordinate with Ni County plans, and our plans do include, our comprehensive land use plans do include the ranching and mining as activities that we think should be continued. So in a roundabout way, I think we do get to that without maybe asking for it directly. The one thing that's not included here that I would like to ask the board, if you want to do, which is a request for us to have cooperating agency status on this.
Yes.
Yes.
CIS. And that's not in our comments, and we need to add that with a...
Darryl, what's the difference between coordinating and cooperating agency status?
Under FLIPMA, they're required to coordinate with local county plans. It's just a matter of anything that they do. I don't, most of the federal agencies seem to ignore that part of FLIPMA, and we usually ask that anyways in our comments, just to remind them of coordination with, not with, you know, county planning documents. Cooperating agency status is a specific thing under NEPA where we participate with the process.
Madam Chair?
If they accept it, if they accept us as a cooperating agency.
That's correct.
Yes, Commissioner Schenhoff.
Yeah, with, with that in mind, then, that, that would be a nice suggestion, but there's been a motion and a second, so someone would consider their motion and second to add that.
I'll add that.
Did you make the first motion?
Yes, he did.
Yes, you did? Okay.
I'll second.
And Commissioner Boraski has amended his second. If there isn't any, if there's no further discussion? Yes, Commissioner Hollis.
The reason why we, coordination was done by ordinance 380 in Title VII. So there's a lot in there that the federal agencies are ignoring, that by FLIPMA, they're supposed to coordinate with us and work with us, not work against us. Thank you.
You're welcome. No further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0. And Darryl, please let Levi know that I truly appreciate those comments.
Pass it on to him. He did a great job.
Would you like to go back to 12A again?
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider Item 12A.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and a second to reconsider Item 12A. So we're returning to that. And that is the action on the appointing seven members to the County Park and Rec Board.
Yes, apparently the terms are not staggered. Other than, what, did you find about the commission and the school board?
We found an odd anomaly in the, in the code, and we're not even sure when the code was changed. It talks about if the expiration of the terms in 2012, you then have to appoint five members to a four-year term, four members to a two-year term. So I think what, all you need to do at this stage to clean things up would be to make the terms all expire 2012.
December 2012.
December 2012, and then after, the next year, or starting after, after December 2012, then five members will be appointed to a four-year term, four members will be appointed to a two-year term.
Okay, then my motion is to appoint all seven who applied.
Five. It's only five?
No, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Oh, there are?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought we were short.
No.
One member's a school board member, and then one's a board of county commissioners.
No.
But...
She's a liaison, so...
But that's, the nine members of the commission include a representative of the...
But we have seven expiring terms, and we have seven applicants, yes. Okay, so it's my motion to appoint all seven who applied to a term ending December 31, 2012.
I still only show five applicants.
Terry Nelson. Oh, you know what I'm doing? Okay, I'm looking at the agenda item. One, two, three, four, then I'll, I'll name them. How's that?
Good, there we go. I work cooking with gas.
Are we going to reconsider that, or what?
I think I was backing up.
I apologize. As I said, I should have had my stuff together on this a little better, and I didn't review it.
No worries, no worries. We'll get there. My motion is to appoint Anna Berg, Tim Marie Kosik, Clinton White, Eileen Car, Irene, I'm sorry, Carlisle, Debbie Cobb, to terms ending December 31, 2012. Welcome, Commissioner Carver.
Yes, we have it. We have a celebrity in the house. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any, any opposed? Passes 5-0. Commissioner Boraski?
Thank you.
Andy, Andy.
Okay, we're going to go to Item 28A. That is the Exporte Communications of Conflicts of Interest Disclosure Statement. Does anyone have anything to disclose? Okay, we'll move on to Item 28B. This is for possible action. It's a discussion and deliberation on a request of approval to, for parcel map. You can read it. Any discussion? Kelly, do you have anything you'd like to say on this item?
Staff recommendation is in the report. Staff recommends approval.
My motion is to approve the Capital Hospitality Management LLC and Western Development LLC parcel map and approval of proposed new street name. For the record, that's Carson Street, subject to the conditions as outlined in the conditions of approval section of the staff report, after having made the findings that were outlined in the staff report.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Did I, I didn't hear you, Commissioner Schenhoff.
Aye.
Did you vote?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye, aye.
We'll move on to Item 28C. This is for action. Discussion and deliberation on a, on a request for approval of an application for a parcel map. Yeah.
I move to approve the Deal With Trust parcel map, subject to the conditions as outlined in the conditions of approval section of the report, after having made the findings that were outlined in the staff report. And additionally, I approve to the waiver request on the map submittal based on staff's recommendation.
Second.
Both of them?
Two waivers, please.
Two waivers, yes, right. Okay, sorry.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
One of the things, fortunately, we didn't see this until it hit the agenda.
Okay.
When we do waivers of this nature, there are three specific findings that the board has to make.
Consistency improvements and site suitability?
No, no, actually, more than that. That was not included in the, the planning, staff recommendation. It indicates that you have to, you have to make a finding that was not detrimental to the public health, safety, welfare, or injures to other property, or that the waiver has the effect of nullifying the intended purpose of the chapter.
Okay.
The second is that there needs to be a finding that the request is unique to the property for which the waiver is sought, and would result in an opportunity for improved planning that would benefit the community, and then indicate that strict compliance is impractical, and that the particular physical surroundings shape, topographical conditions, or established use of a specific property involved, the strict adherence to the requirements would be, would be impractical.
So four?
Three, those three.
Okay, so...
Again, that's something that we missed. It really is required any waiver
Okay.
of the code provisions.
I will include that in the future.
And Kelly, I think that your staff report, it was pretty clear that we met all of that criteria. So I will amend my motion to include the district attorney's waiver findings as required by the ordinance.
Okay, I have an amended motion. Do I have an amended second?
Yes.
I do have an amended second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0. We'll move on to Item 28D, and this is for action. It's a discussion and deliberation on a request for approval of a waiver of landfill maintenance fees.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Schenhoff.
Under B3 of our code, it states, "The Board of County Commissioners may at its discretion grant to a property owner a partial or full waiver of the annual landfill maintenance fees assessed to that property owner, where such a waiver is required to provide equity a single-family residence on contiguous parcels, which generates, no additional waste, would qualify for this waiver." It also says in the code that if it's under one residential use, and I believe this is under one residential use, and it creates no additional garbage, so I'd make a motion to approve it based on those findings.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it. I want to hear what Mr. Fanning has to say.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? And Dave Fanning is here.
Good morning, Commissioners. On this possible action, you guys are going to actually have coming to you by the end of this fiscal year, a request to actually increase the actual landfill operation fees that are collected on the tax rolls. And because of actually what we have in front of us, the economy, everything that we're in, we are actually going to not seek an increase, but we are going to actually try to massage the $20, or the actual $30 that is actually being allocated. So this is really a hard time to actually sit here and actually talk about landfill fees being waived. It's certainly a hardship, and I would actually like to present that, and I'd actually like to throw that out there at this time, due to the fact that our costs are going up, why the landfill property taxes are not being paid, or they are actually being left in limbo. So I have actually got something that I am going to bring back to the board here in the next couple of months for the landfill fees, and recommendation on that. So just fuel for thought, if, if you would, consider obviously looking at the potential pleas not waiving fees. And I understand that you guys do have that right, but it's a hardship right now that we're going to have to determine what we want to do with that.
Well, Dave, it goes beyond that for me. This doesn't meet the minimum requirements for waiving the fees.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't meet the requirements of the statute.
And I withdraw my second.
Yeah, and I understand that.
I have a withdrawn second, and I also have a comment myself. And this was, I originally read this in the same fashion that I think probably Commissioner Schenhoff did, which was, I saw grazing and pasture as the same thing. However, with a conversation with staff, it was pointed out to me that even though the individuals are referring to this as pasture, it is not a designated agricultural use.
Right, it's a residential lot.
Right, it's a residential lot, which allows them to sell it at any time, and then you have a, a new residential lot.
And the waiver goes with it.
And the waiver goes with it, so...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I had that discussion with Mr. Osborne earlier, and I've asked, I've asked to have him bring forward something that would change that, so that the waiver would, if the property is sold and is going to be built on, then the waiver would go away. I don't know how we could do that. I don't know how we could do that. I'm sure we have to amend the code to do that. And that is my only problem with it, too. I do, I do have that problem with it. But I, I see in the code where it says under one regula, run, one residential use and contiguous parcels, and that's why I made the motion, and I respect the board's wish not to have a second on it.
I appreciate your motion. I truly do, Dan. This is a tough one to make decisions on. And that, the guidelines have been extremely helpful in my experience. Do I have a second? Then that one dies for a lack of second. Do I have another motion?
Madam Chair, staff's recommendation is disapproval of the waiver request based on the fact that this APN is not part of the, the APN in question for the waiver is not part of the residential use of AP 1912132, and it is in fact a vacant lot, and therefore the waiver request does not meet the criteria that was established for approval by the Board of Commissioners, and the criteria that I'm referring to are the guidelines concerning recommendations on landfill maintenance fee waiver requests. My motion is to not, to deny based on staff's recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
That passes 4-1. And we will move on to item 28E. And this is discussion and deliberation concerning a request to release 100% of the financial security related to the subdivision improvement agreement for the Brabham Business and Light Industrial Park subdivision. I believe we heard from this lady a few months ago, didn't we?
Daryl, thank you very much for the additional information you sent me. It would be my motion to approve this based on staff's recommendation.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second with discussion.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Go ahead, Commissioner Shenhoffen.
Yeah, I'd like to see us change this policy in the future. Apparently, they have to come back again and ask to have bonds released, and this particular one's been sometime... I did have a discussion with Steve again on this, the head of planning, Steve Osborne. And I don't know if we can do something to speed this up next time. So, man, I see Daryl coming forward. Or Steve.
We can, we can certainly look at, at the process and see what we can do to, to make it simpler and where the staff can go ahead and initiate something when we know that the bond is no longer necessary, not have, have to have that developer request it.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'd like to see. Otherwise...
I'll for the question.
Okay, I'm done talking. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0. We'll move on to item 30, nope, we did that one. Item 32A for possible action. Discussion and deliberation to appoint three members to the Gabstown Advisory Board due to the three expired terms. I did attend their informal elections there, and it went very smoothly this time, thanks to Sam. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, the citizens of Gabbs, through their informal election process, process have selected Heather Higbee, Tom Lyman, and Willow Timbrell to represent them on the town advisory board, and that's my motion to appoint them.
Second.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Although, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Item 32B, action, discussion and deliberation regarding directing the donation of Knite County property to the Town of Tonopah for public purposes.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I have a disclosure to make on this. I'm a, I'm a long-term member of the Tonopah Historic Mining Park Foundation Board, and I will not be receiving any financial or pecuni, I have no financial or pecuniary interest in this. I do want to make the disclosure, and I don't believe that my participation in this will constitute a conflict of interest.
Thank you. Commissioner Shenhoffen.
Yeah. Number one in the resolution, parcel number 008341-11. I believe that was in the other list that we had, too, so I just wondered if we're duplicating here the list of towns that they asked to have pulled off the tax rolls.
Lorena?
It was on the list, but we crossed it out. It wasn't supposed to be on the request to transfer from the Treasury Trust, because Knite County owns it. So we just crossed it out and put it on this new resolution.
Okay, well, it was, I saw it in my backup. It's still there, so I don't have any other problem. A motion approved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0. We'll move on to the public petitioners. This is item 33A for action. Discussion deliberation to appoint one person to the new Knite County Water District Governing Board at-large position for a term of two years that will expire December 31, 2014.
Madam Chair, I would nominate or approve William Lee White. Amagosa's the only applicant, so...
Second.
I have a motion and two seconds. Is there any further discussion? I want to say I think Lee White would be a...
He'll do a great job.
He'll do a wonderful job. You got a good member coming on, Mitch.
And he replaces Robert Cameron.
Yes.
Who was also a good member.
Yes. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Pass 5-0. This is our second period of general public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in Param?
No.
Anyone in Beatty or Amagosa? Anyone here wishing to speak in general public comment? Okay, we'll move on to our second announcements. Are there any announcements that we missed the first time around? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I have two. We're adjourned, folks. Thank you.
We doing closed sessions?
Do we have to?
Yeah.
We can do them after. Okay. All right.
You're absolutely right.
All right, our first closed session, then we'll probably be, we'll let Brian govern.
I think that needs to be read into the record, doesn't it?
No, because those are non-meetings. They're just...
Mike.
Then I, then I, I respectfully ask that you pull it from the agenda then. Just say, we're gonna have closed session. I mean, there's no sense in putting it on the agenda if, if we don't have to do it.
Okay, thanks, Gary. Good suggestion.
There also, there is a notification to the public, so the public knows whether we're gonna have one or not because we pull it when we first approve the agenda.
All you have to do is say, we're gonna go into closed session, and then I have to go through all that.
My only question was, are we going there now?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
We're not going to lunch?
No, we could be done with these in just a few minutes, correct?
Yes, but to clarify, there's two different issues here. You have to go to a closed session to discuss personnel matters.
Right.
So that you have to have a motion to go to closed session on that.
Oh, okay.
You do not have to have a motion to go into closed session to discuss legal matters.
Okay, are we going, we are going in first for labor?
Yes.
Okay.
So we need to reopen the meeting.
I am gonna reopen the meeting for a moment. I need a motion, please, to go into closed session for the purpose of converging with county management's representing, representatives regarding labor.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Sure. Good catch, Gary.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's 4-0 with Dan gone, and we are going into closed session, folks. Thank you.